No audience.
You guys ready? If we could call the meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Barr.
Here.
Jovanini.
Here.
Eckhoff.
Here.
Callis.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Cowser.
Here.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Cranford.
Here.
Howard.
Here.
Willie.
Here.
Thank you. We have with us this evening Dr. Tom Bennett, our state senator, and we're going to have a proclamation honoring him for all of his service and work to us. Tom, I'll read the proclamation and then give you a couple of minutes, too. Honoring State Senator Dr. Tom Bennett, whereas the city of Pontiac was represented with distinction from 2003 and 2024 by State Senator Tom Bennett, whereas State Senator Dr. Tom Bennett is an enthusiastic proponent of Pontiac-Livingston County, having also served as State House of Representatives from the 106th District, whereas State Senator Dr. Tom Bennett was known for his tremendous work ethic and would take on the toughest issues and largest tasks without hesitation, whereas Dr. -- State Senator Dr. Tom Bennett was a problem solver, never afraid to reach across the aisle to find solutions, whereas during his legislative tenure, State Senator Dr. Tom Bennett served on task force and commissions focused on early childhood, teacher assessments, environment, and energy, whereas State Senator Tom Bennett has been instrumental in the city of Pontiac securing state funding for infrastructure, public projects, safety, and economic development, whereas along with his legislative accomplishments, State Senator Dr. Tom Bennett will be remembered as a friend of agriculture and to the issues that face communities in central Illinois. Whereas we take this time now to reflect on the work and friendship State Senator Dr. Tom Bennett has devoted to the cities and communities of Pontiac and Livingston County, now therefore be it resolved, I, William L. Alvey, and the members of the Pontiac City Council to hereby proclaim our gratitude for the tireless work of State Senator Dr. Tom Bennett on behalf of the city of Pontiac and recognize the groundwork he laid for the future endeavors of the city of Pontiac, and which with this proclamation, the city of Pontiac wishes to thank Senator Tom Bennett for his service and wish him great success in his next chapter. Thank you, Tom. Please go on up. We thought you'd like one that's more suitable for framing.
Thank you.
Sure, sure.
It's my wife, yeah, she follows me around. She doesn't have the camera, I have the camera.
Those two get out because they don't want to be in the picture in the background.
Oh, give yourself. Thank you. I'm a politician, but I promise I won't talk long. Stop watching, that's so good. Thank you, Phil, this is very nice. This is very nice. I appreciate that. And thank you for all that you've done and for the council here. Your job is not easy. It takes everybody working together to make this happen. It really does. And there's something magical here. And it really comes down to the people that are here. You put the time in and make a difference. People don't always know what you're doing, right? At the end of the day, people are watching the things that you're working on and making a difference. But there's a magic here in Pontiac. There's also a magic here with the cameras. I represent 13 cameras, or all of ours. And yet, something very special. That's only because of hard work, that people keep at it, and keep on doing it day by day. So, one part to you. I really appreciate the opportunity to serve. I have a school teacher for about, I think, seven years. I worked at State Farm almost 30 years. Four months short. And now I'm able to serve in the General Assembly for the last 10 years, representing you. And I've had a lot of fun at different jobs I've had, but I gotta tell you, this has been the best job I've ever had. And it's because of the people I've worked with every day who try to make a difference. And it's just a lot of fun. So, I'm very grateful of the friendships we've made over time, and also I appreciate the opportunity to work with you to find those solutions, the problems that we have. And we got more to do, right? It's never done. There's always more to do, but that's okay. We're out to get it. You guys are trying to move forward on this, so God bless you, more power to you. And this is really very, very good. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Quite a while ago, Tom, I received a plaque from some folks, and they told me that it was suitable for hanging. They met the plaque. So, keep that in mind. Again, thank you.
Clarification is all we could.
Yes, there you are. Thanks again. Okay. Now we get into regular business. We have the consent agenda with two items.
I would motion acceptance of the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by John Willie. Roll call, please.
Barr.
Yes.
Jovanini.
Yes.
Eckhoff.
Yes.
Callis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Cowser.
Yes.
Bradshaw.
Yes.
Cranford.
Yes.
Howard.
Yes.
Willie.
Yes.
Okay. Moving into the regular agenda. Approval of the WWTP purchased communication hardware. You want to touch on that, or Andrew there?
Yep. Good evening. I'm here tonight to talk about a project that has been ongoing since we started the wastewater treatment plant upgrade several years ago. As part of the project, the electricians assigned developed a computer network alongside Farnsworth Group, and they deployed this network using fiber rings out at the treatment plant. The initial design was, for simplicity, to have three different networks that all run on the different fiber rings to connect them together. And they wanted them separate mostly because they didn't want the things to crosstalk. So, they didn't want something from Network A to be able to talk to Network B. They wanted to keep them separate so that they could understand what traffic was where. The main thing they didn't account for when they designed this project with that in mind was that they were going to be connecting each of those independent networks, A, B, and C, into a switch inside of our equipment at the treatment plant. So, while there are three unique networks, all of those unique networks plug into one thing, and this one thing isn't capable of being configured to keep them separated. So, in computer networking, we call what this has created a loop. And these are bad for several reasons, but I won't get really super deep into it. What it causes us at the plant is intermittent network connectivity. So, we will randomly have drops that don't make any sense, and due to the equipment that was selected and put into the project, I don't have any way of determining where the fault is. And to clarify on that, there are the three networks that are all plugged into the one switch, so if that one switch has the problem, it looks like it's coming from all of the switches at the same time. Makes it really hard to make changes. So, we knew about this network configuration for a few years. We did the best we could to keep everything running and keep the plant up and to keep the network stable, and we were able to do that up until about four or five months ago. Once we got to where Farnsworth was happy that all of their equipment was running the way that it needed to be, we started looking into making the network the way that it needed to be, so that it can be resilient, so that if something fails, we know how to fix it quickly. During that process, really simple procedures of moving something from one switch to the other, which should be logically next to each other, breaks everything. Once that happened, I called in Entree Solutions, who was the company I was employed with before, and they've helped us with a lot of networking -- sorry, networking projects since I came on board. We worked at -- looked at it together and determined that it's too difficult to pinpoint where the problem is while simultaneously keeping the plant in full operation. So, we haven't made any changes. All we've done was utilize the fiber rings that are already in place. We've gone through and identified how we can utilize that fiber for new equipment that has the functionality that we need to troubleshoot and monitor the network. Sorry, lost my train here. And we identified switches that are going to work with our pre-existing equipment. So, everywhere else in the city, we've got one brand of equipment that all communicate with each other, from the rec center all the way to the treatment plant. Everything runs the same equipment, and my proposal is to push that equipment down to the switch layer at the treatment plant. So, we want to replace the three switches that are in each building with a single switch that is configured the way that we need it to be configured for everything to work right. Once we have the switches and the ring identified, we can set that ring up, set up monitoring, and bring our equipment from the SCADA over to it. Once that's all set up, if we have any problems when we move the equipment over, it'll be a lot easier to identify them, fix them, and keep the plant up. As part of the quote, which should be included, I did a good amount of vetting before we even went to Entree for pricing. The cheapest price I was able to find on my own was $1,000 per switch, and Entree was able to get pricing deeply discounted to get them to us for $800 each. Knowing what I know about the business, they're not making any money on that, and you'll see that they put 32 hours of tech time on the quote, and that's going to give us the headroom to have multiple heads looking at the project and making sure that it succeeds and there isn't any downtime at the plant. So, Entree is committed to helping us get this network fixed and set up so that we don't have to worry about it ever again. With that, I'm open to any and all questions for clarification.
So, you're integrating the plant with what else we're doing with the city? That's, in theory, replacing down to one switch.
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're saying? So, once you go through that process, will that -- will that get you at a level of technology that you shouldn't have a crash elsewhere?
Absolutely, absolutely. And to the point, elsewhere, when we have crashes, they all go back to a centralized monitoring system that I operate. So, it's really easy to identify, this switch is down, this port is down. The switches that are in there right now don't have any of those features. So, if I suspect there's a problem, there are 16 buildings on the plant, each of them with three switches. It could be any one of them. So, it's simplifying the network and giving me the tools to look in and see where the issues are.
That brings us to a level of technology that's consistent where everybody else?
When I was talking with -- when I've talked with Jim and Jake, I don't foresee us needing to touch the computer network side of things until we replace everything in the plant. Until the network needs to change because technology has changed, that equipment will be rock solid way into the future.
So, this is why you only got the one quote?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. I, like I said, I went through -- there's a website that we've gone through in the past, avfirewalls.net. They're a distributor that has sold us our network equipment in the past. The cheapest I was -- it's list price, these switches are $1,400. The cheapest I was able to get it on my own was $1,000, and Entree came 20% off of that even. So, there's no way -- they're cheaper. This price is cheaper than some of the used versions of the same switch.
Okay, thank you.
So, just a couple of things to add to that. As you look, this is a pretty significant series of a bunch of smaller pieces of equipment that add up, and we discussed this as well. There were two things. Entree is our provider of Fortinet, which is what we use everywhere, which we felt was important to keep the same type of equipment out there. And then also, this gives -- you know, Entree was instrumental in building out there, and when Andrew was with them, building our network here. So, we wanted to make sure that we still had people who are familiar with that Fortinet network assisting Andrew when we were doing so, which is why we looked at this.
And Entree is the premier partner in central Illinois for this equipment. They service the high schools for their Fortinet equipment.
Will we be able to get anything out of the existing equipment?
I intend to use it around the city as access-level switching. Access-level switching is like what you have at your home, where it's just multiple things with an Ethernet port and you plug them in. Those switches are great for that. They're not good for identifying, like, metrics on a port and why is it broken, things like that, so.
So, with the new switches, will this -- will it identify? Is -- can you program it to identify the problem so that you don't even have to do anything but say?
Absolutely, and that's the intention.
Okay.
They call it -- the term that they use generally is called single pane of glass management. And so, instead of having to log into 16 different switches, I log into the firewall and I look at where the packets are going, and it makes visual maps and things that are a lot easier to interpret than chasing packets around a network.
Andrew, what's the timeframe?
I spoke with Entree last week. They're actually moving forward, getting the order ready, so we're hoping to start within this month of January.
Then, if I may just add on to Andrew real quick. The network out there is not only key to running the equipment and keeping the treatment plant operating, it is the backbone of our alarm system. So, when we lose that network and that network drops and crashes, we don't just lose our equipment, we lose the ability to get an alarm to tell us it's down. And that is just as critical as running the equipment itself, so.
Is this above and beyond the budget, or was this something you were planning on?
This is something out of our repairs portion of the budget we do have ample funds for. This was anticipated when we developed our last budget, assuming we were going to try to tackle it this fiscal year.
Thank you, Jake.
Has there been a lesson learned by our designers that?
This was Andrew coming on board too late. If Andrew would have been with us during design.
Yeah.
This probably would have went a whole different direction with network.
100%, and having spoken with some of the guys at Farnsworth, they did learn their lesson.
Yeah.
Real good.
Well, I have a little bit of personal experience with this because that satellite there provides the Internet service over at the golf course and the Elks, and we are down about 80% of the time. So, it is crucial.
And so, that's a big pain point for me personally because it's not supposed to be that way, and I can't fix it for you because nothing's broken at the plant.
Yep.
I gotta keep the plant running. So, this is a secondary thing that our golf course is going to have an increased communications lift from this as well because they hang off of this network.
Is that why it was -- the golf course was crashing?
Mm-hmm, probably.
Most likely.
I know they've had some groups go through where everything had to be written down by hand because, you know.
That would be it, yes.
Yeah. And lines were getting really long, really long.
That is it, 100%.
I would motion acceptance of the quote by Entree.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Kelly, seconded by Jamie. Roll call, please.
Jovanini.
Yes.
Eckhoff.
Yes.
Callis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Cowser.
Yes.
Bradshaw.
Yes.
Cranford.
Yes.
Howard.
Yes.
Willie.
Yes.
Barr.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andrew. Next on the agenda, special housing committee reports. Kelly, you want to lead off?
Sure. We had our committee met since our last meeting, I guess, the next day, and had a pretty good productive meeting. The survey is completed, and as your report says, 339. It actually, after the paper surveys were submitted, we actually had 371 responses, which Amy at Illinois Housing is thrilled with that as a number of entries back. So, we are now in the solicitation and training of volunteer phase, and we actually have a training session on Thursday from 4:00 to 6:00 for volunteers who will be helping us gather a housing stock survey, and they'll be walking streets of neighborhoods or in their vehicles, assessing just exterior notes of homes via an app on their phone. It's a pretty simple activity for anyone who is interested. It's -- I don't believe you have to have any big skill set to do it. It's just if you want to help gather the information. And we will be doing, not the entire community, but we've identified certain areas that we're going to do. So, and then we also discussed working on some new regulations or gathering information about fire safety for upper, basically apartments in the downtown area. So, we have a meeting scheduled moving forward in February for that. That's about it. Anybody, Mike, or anybody got anything to add with that? It was a good meeting.
Just that 370-plus responses is a indicator of community interest, for sure.
The sport's great. The more participation, the better for all of us.
Yep.
How many habitable spaces are there downtown? And what percentage of them are filled?
I can't answer that. I know that's something that we're working on trying to gather.
Yeah, there's a difference of opinions on what's habitable and what isn't, so we're trying to make it more uniform. But before we're done with the rest of these housing projects, we will have that one, too.
Frank, part of the assessment is we've got a plan. What, do you have to have a fire sprinkler? Are there workarounds of fire sprinklers? We've got to look at, send the notes, Ottawa, some other places. How have you handled that? Because the cost, when I put it into cup and the scone, I think it was $40,000. It's now upwards of $50,000 to do the same thing. So, we've got to look into that and have solutions. When we start it, we need to have answers to these questions that they're going to ask. So, that's a -- we have a -- we're working, we got a plan, that's being worked.
Art VII is coming.
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you. I think it's proceeding in a good pace for all of us, so hopefully the February meeting will give us more insights and we'll see how the volunteerism works out. Thank you. Needing to move on, item C is property tax levy. I think Jim wants to comment.
So, after the last meeting, when we introduced the draft levy, a few changes have occurred on that in some consultation with Lauterback and Amen as we were evaluating our funding levels. We did make an adjustment from the FICA. That was, we had set last time at 260, 580, down to 205. We felt that that was going to be an appropriate amount. Adjusted the corporate tax to 162, 128. That's about $10,000 less than what it was last time, last meeting. Street lighting, in looking at that, you know, we did have a crash, a pretty significant crash in some street lighting repair this year, so we bumped that from $10,343 to $40,000. Park maintenance, we adjusted from $72,400 to $100,000. Recreation fund, $103,000 to $150,000. The band, I needed to adjust that a little bit from 32.5 to 33.5. And in the meantime, the actuaries for the pensions for our required funding for those came in. The police, we had estimated at 785, 273. Its actual amount is 788, 075. And the fire pension, we estimated at 496, 387. It came in at 461, 564. The library, we increased their numbers. The levy is -- can be increased by the amount of the CPI used for PTEL or 5%, whichever is lower. This year, the CPI for PTEL is 3.4%. This levy is a reflection of 3.4% increase, which will bring in $101,097 more dollars. Last year, we levied $2,969,965. This year, we look to levy $3,071,062. And if that, I would take any questions if you have any.
Having no questions, this is part of our annual process, so we just need to move on and pass the ordinance.
The streetlight department thing, does that, repairs, does that reflect any of the tree trimming around that, or is that a separate thing around the lights?
Any of the what?
Tree trimming around any of the streetlights? Is that part of that repairs thing, or is that a separate thing?
So, yeah, that would be, like, if you're talking about the fixture, having to fix the fixture, that would be street, yeah, street lighting.
What did you mean by the crash in the street lighting when you said?
We lost the street light up here on Mill Street.
Oh.
Yeah, and so, about the Stillman Building, that, and we just had a number of some street lighting repairs that were higher. And if you recall, the Spillman -- Stillwell.
Stillwell.
Stillwell, I'm sorry. I have police things going through my head, apparently. The Stillwell insurance claim, the property limit from the driver of the vehicle was $100,000, and so after doing their formulation, we never recovered everything that we lost. So, there was some loss there as well, so.
Got it.
Yep.
Can we interpret this, the $3,071? What's the percentage difference from the year before?
3.4%.
3.4%.
Yep, that's the CPI change. To the two years prior to that, that CPI was 5%, so it's down to 3.4. And what we'll probably see are expenses that are exceeding 3.4%. However, we, like I said before, we made some savings in our liability insurance that will at least help us for the next couple of years. That was a pretty decent saving by switching to CERMA. And so, right now, we sit in okay shape.
I would motion acceptance of ordinance 2024-0034.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Kelly, seconded by Mike Barr. Roll call, please.
Eckhoff?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Callis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Cowser.
Yes.
Bradshaw.
Yes.
Cranford.
Yes.
Howard.
Yes.
Willie.
Yes.
Barr.
Yes.
Jovanini.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to council schedule for 2025.
Yes, you have in front of you the meeting schedule, still first and third Mondays of each month, asterisks indicating that Monday was a holiday and the council would be moved to the following Tuesday.
I think they should all be on Tuesdays.
Was there a motion there, or?
Sure. Sure.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I think we need more discussion before we get into that.
I don't think we need more. We're fine. Just three days apiece.
Okay. No change to really speak of, so. Do we have a motion to approve?
I think we had it.
Yeah, we had it.
I just need to call roll.
Call the roll.
Okay. Callis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Eckhoff?
Yes.
Okay. Now we're going to get into some TIF project. Ordinance 2024-0035, approving the tax redundant plan project.
Yes. So ordinance 35, 36, and 37 are all interrelated. They're the next procedural steps. And the final steps to establishing the TIF four. For the record, 2024-035 indicates that the city council on October 7th of '24 passed the resolution 2024-R008, which set December 2nd as the date for the public hearing on the plan. And notice with respect to the availability of the plan was given by mail on October 9th pursuant to the TIF Act. And the notice was given to all interested parties that are registered with the city concerning the project. The availability of plan, notice with respect to the availability of the plan was given by mail on October 9th pursuant to the TIF Act. And that notice was given to all the residential addresses in good faith that the city determined were located within 750 feet of the boundaries of the TIF project area. And that the council caused the hearing to be held relative to the plan and the designation of the project on December 2nd, 2024. Also, do notice with respect to that hearing was given pursuant to the TIF Act. That notice given to the taxing district, to the state of Illinois DCO, all by certified mail on October 8th of 2024, and publication in the Daily Leader on 11/11 of 2024 and 11/18 of 2024, and by certified mail to the property owners located within the project area. Now, this plan sets forth the factors which constitute the need for the abatement of the conditions within the project area that have led to blight or may lead to blight. And the council has reviewed testimony concerning such need presented at the public hearing and has reviewed the eligibility report and is generally informed of the conditions of the project area. The council has also reviewed the conditions pertaining to the lack of private investment in the project area and whether, and to determine whether private development would take place in the project area as a whole without the adoption of the plan for the project area. The city councils also reviewed the conditions pertaining to the real property in the project area to determine whether contiguous parcels of real property in the project area would be substantially benefited by the proposed redevelopment. And the council has reviewed the proposed TIF four increment redevelopment plan and project and the comprehensive plan for the development of the municipality as a whole to determine whether the plan conforms to the comprehensive plan of the city. And that this ordinance then would indicate that the area constituting the TIF four, which is described in Exhibit A, the legal description is there, attached heretofore, and made part of the ordinance that conditions exist that enable the project area to be designated as a redevelopment project area and to be classified as a combination blighted area and conservation area as defined in Section 1174.4-3 of the TIF Act. That the redevelopment area on the whole has not been subject to growth throughout the investment by private enterprise and would not be reasonably anticipated to be developed without the adoption of the redevelopment plan. The redevelopment plan and project for the TIF four redevelopment project area conformed to the comprehensive plan for the development of the city as a whole. The parcels of real property in the proposed redevelopment project area are contiguous, and only those contiguous parcels of real property which will be substantially benefited by the proposed redevelopment project are included in the TIF four redevelopment project area. The estimated date for the completion of the redevelopment project area or retirement of obligations shall not be later than December 31 of the year in which a payment to the city treasurer is provided in subsection B, Section 11-74.4-8 of the TIF Act, is to be made with respect to ad valorem taxes levied in the 23rd calendar year after the year in which the ordinance approving the TIF for redevelopment project is adopted, which will be 12/31 of 2048 if adopted today. The TIF increment redevelopment plan and project for the TIF redevelopment project area, which was the subject matter of the hearing held on December 2nd, hereby adopted, and a copy of the aforementioned redevelopment plan and project marked as Exhibit B is attached and made part of this ordinance. And the final is all other ordinance in conflict are repealed. The ordinance shall be in full force and a fact from after passage approval and publication as required by law. And after, upon tonight, if all three of these are approved, then notice will go to the county clerk and the assessor to establish that base EAV for the project area. So, long story is, this ordinance sets forth all the public actions that have taken place and adopts the TIF four redevelopment project plan.
So we can consider all three at one time? We don't have to vote, can't we?
I think you should adopt them separately.
I think so, too.
The separate roll call.
Okay.
I don't think we have to read them all because they're all, they're all packed on Friday.
We'll vote individually, but it's omnibus.
They're all tied together, so if you're going to vote approving the plan, you need to vote for the designation of the area and the tax situation. It's all quite impartial.
And I'll just say, the ordinance number 36 really is the designation of that area. It's naming what it is. And 37 adopts tax increment financing. Basically says that when that base EAV is met, any ad valorem tax above that base increment will go to the city, which shall establish a TIF four fund.
Okay. So we will take them individually, starting with ordinance 035.
Would you like to make the motion to accept it?
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Jason. Roll call, please.
Lee?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Eckhoff?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 036, designating of the area.
I'd so move for acceptance of the ordinance.
Motion by Bill Callis, seconded by Scott Cranford. Roll call, please.
Hauser?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Eckhoff?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. And moving to ordinance 037.
I so move.
Motion by Barb, seconded by Frank Jovanini.
Two seconds.
Roll call, please.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Eckhoff?
Yes.
Callis?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving into mayor's comment.
Item H.
Pardon me?
Yeah. Financing, ten year overpaying.
Yeah, the additional one I buried in here is item H.
I can take it then. So we're talking now of Centennial Plaza and the financing for it. So Alan and I met, and we had a conversation regarding two things. One, we still need to contact bond council to make sure that everything is in order. But the main next phase of it for the issuing of debt certificates for this project, I felt like the TIF can handle about $300,000 a year and still be able to do other projects that we would be able to handle, which would look like about six years of a loan. And so we also have spoken with Bank of Pontiac, funding that. If the Bank of Pontiac was able to fund it themselves, they would, said they would be completely fine with it, or however the council chose, if you wanted to spread that to any other banks as well. So tonight, I think that would be, the question is, how does the council want to do the financing?
It's going to be, the bond council did get back to me. He was out of town. He was at a conference in Kansas City and gave me some alternative dates for this week that we could talk to him. But you know, from past experience, they're probably going to be debt certificates rather than TIF bonds, per se. Because debt certificates are kind of a general obligation of the city, but you can use TIF funds to pay them or any funds. That's what we used with the golf course and all the recent financing of things has been. But we've approached those projects differently from time to time. In the past, we have started when we sold bonds, even going back to the 80s when we did traditional GO bonds and revenue bonds. We would contact all the local banks, see what their interest is, and give any local bank the opportunity to participate. We have, on some of the later projects, especially smaller ones, now that we have banks that are capable of taking that size of investment, have gone with, just like Bank of Pontiac. I think the purchase of the golf course was a participated one. So the Bank of Pontiac was lead, but I think First Financial and State Bank of Graymont bought some of those debt certificates.
Splash pad as well.
Huh?
Splash pad.
Splash pad is the same one. So the question is, the Bank of Pontiac has asked if they could take them all and whether that's something that is palatable to the council. It obviously simplifies the matter. But politically, you know, it's a good investment because it's tax-free bonds, very safe, it's a good return. And, you know, there's a perception, if you don't allow it. So I suggested to Jim that we put this on the agenda. We were originally, we actually were going to talk about both the ambulance substation and Centennial Plaza. But we decided in our meeting that because of the indefinite time problem of the substation, that we're better off to do, go ahead with Centennial Plaza as a separate standalone, one and a half million debt certificate. And I thought, before we made a management decision of how we were going to sell those obligations, should get council input. I was wondering if, I mean, if we spread it out before, is Bank of Pontiac indicating they're not going to be a part of it? We have Bank of Pontiac, the lead, the paying agent. The payments go to Bank of Pontiac, and then they disperse them in accordance with the debt certificates that are spread out.
That works great for us in accounting in that we're only issuing one check rather than getting three different.
It doesn't complicate our lives, but it makes it easier for the Bank of Pontiac just to have it as a loan on their books, to have it in one spot. But, you know, I know from past experience, even back when we were doing other bonds, the only one we ever didn't sell locally was the big sewer project from the 80s when we did the last sewer rebuild. Remember, eight million or something. We had more bonds than the locals could handle. And we went through, Brown, I think, was the bond marketer. And we had actually a bond auction, and they were bought by Northern Trust. And then it turns out, local entities bought back most of those bonds at the end of the day. They just couldn't handle all of them. So I know we've had concerns over trying to treat everybody fairly, and we just had to talk about bidding projects, you know, for work and supplies and products. And this is nothing but that. It's another program. And I'm usually the one that gets on the phone and calls these others and say, we're doing this, are you interested? The Bank of Pontiac would probably set the rate. And then they would be, have the opportunity to buy up to, say, a third of it or something like that. You know, because we probably only go to three banks. We've never gone to SoC before. I don't know if they even buy these sorts of things. And Sonment never was a player, but now that's part of State Bank of Graymont. So we go to First Financial and Graymont at least. And whether we approach SoC, I might, I don't know what their investment portfolio is in a place like that.
Do the rates typically vary? Like, if you look at three different projects, is it much the same between them?
Mm-hmm.
Different banks?
If the bond prices are pretty, they look at the market and look at the maturity and the risk. And we don't, we're not a, we don't, there's very little risk with our bonds, but we don't have the kind of credit rating like the state of Illinois or something would have. We're not, any obligations we issue would not be credit rated. So they would look at non-credit rated local issues. And they're all, if we had competitive, you're asking about competitive pricing. Did everybody give us a proposal? Which we could theoretically do that, too. And it'd probably be within a tenth or two tenths of a percent. But it's certainly something we could do.
So it really comes down, it's a small debt, a small amount of debt that we're asking for, and it's just the efficiency of the city that makes a difference.
It's half of our, half of our living for the entire debt. And $300,000 a year for six years should cover debt service and the principal. I'd just like some direction on how to approach it. And we'll do whatever, you know. I'll call the banks, say we want a competitive bid on rates. This is what we're looking at, timeframe. You want the whole thing or part of it? And get multiple proposals. So how will that affect, we did make a deal with Bank of Pontiac. How would that affect that at all? Well, just kind of, if we, the idea is that is an alternative to making a deal with the Bank of Pontiac. The Bank of Pontiac, they'll do all of it or any part of it. They are, they're good. Yeah, we had that, we called Mark Donovan at our meeting the other day and said, hey, you know, we've done this in the past, we've shared it. And he said, whatever you got to do, guys, you know, we'll work with you. So very, very user-friendly. I guess we should go with all the other banks and make sure that they're not interested. Commit to that, right?
Well, the fire, the substation's going to be a pretty large debt.
Substation is going to be just a tad bigger than this. About the same amortization, though. The trust will take care of the first five years, and then the city would have probably the last five, the last year. It's going to be very, very similar when you take off the Humiston Trust's first $300,000 and a half million you have from USDA. It's going to be very close.
Which is good, because then we have that time.
Theoretically, you know, in fact, we got to check the trust. It was supposed to pay in November 1. I got a meeting tomorrow, and we'll check on that. So I see where we're at with that. But it would be nice, unfortunately, the delays in the ambulance substation probably are, any gains on money we may have in the bank may be offset by increased costs. You know, the longer the wait, the more it's going to cost. That's why we thought, with the deadline for getting Centennial Plaza done, we thought we ought to separate. Originally, my thought was just put them together and do one big one. And we'd handle the breakdown between the payments internally. But our needs for Centennial Plaza are going to be there long before, probably, we're ready to do the ambulance substation.
How difficult is it to get, I don't know if you'd call it bids, but rates from?
It's a phone, it's a phone call to the president or whatever. You know, be a call, and actually it's Mark Donovan, Ron Minnert, and somebody down in Terre Haute, probably, and First Financial.
Could we, say, tonight, get, like, bids on three local banks and then take the cheapest one? Or does it have to be a two-part thing?
It doesn't have, well, I think we should gauge their interest and come back to you guys. Because we're not ready to issue. Your formal approval will be when bond council prepares the entire package. But we tell them what our terms are so they can prepare the paperwork to actually do it. So we will gauge the interest, come back to you guys, and see what we're looking at. And then we kind of make a decision on the direction we're going. And then I bring bond council into that direction, and they'll draw the paperwork appropriate. It's just a couple more calls. I don't mind doing it at all. I like to keep good relationships with all the institutions.
Okay.
So do you have kind of a consensus? We want to get some quotes? We want to get some, gauge some other interest.
Yes.
Wonderful.
That sounds like a legitimate idea.
But it would be nice if we could just write one check.
Whichever way we do it.
So when we did Splash Pad, we had three banks involved. We wrote one check.
There will be a lead bank. There will be a paying agent. They call them paying agent in the documents.
The other banks would send us information come audit time, but we just sent the one bank to the Bank of Pontiac and then they dispersed to the other two.
The other banks that are investing will likely request a copy of our city audit for their records to show that we're sound since we're not rating.
So the consensus is to get the quotes and go further. Appreciate that. Okay, let's move on. I'm sure the Bears are winning by now, so we'll go. Comments, mayor's comments, a couple of things. Since Tom has left, he's having a coffee and conversation Wednesday at the Pontiac Family Kitchen and I think it's 8:30 to 9:30. Kind of like a farewell tour. And we'd like to, you know, have some representation and stop by and say goodbye to Tom again and keep that in mind. Another big thing coming up is the Pontiac Holiday Basketball Tournament right after Christmas. That'll be on for three days. So we need to kind of spread the word. And it is the oldest holiday tournament in the state of Illinois. So want to keep that in mind. I wrote myself a note that tomorrow we're having Public Properties Committee meeting at 5:30. Mike, you're, I know you're on top of it, so it's good.
Got my shoes polished.
Good man. The other thing is I'd like to make sure that we all keep an eye on Chris back here because he's got us all ready for a real stormy winter. He's got the guys all primed and ready for snow plowing and everything else. Plus they've done a great job on keeping everything back in shape after heavy winds, everything else we had going on. So he's doing a great job and we want to make sure that we recognize him whenever we get a chance. Other than that, I don't think we'll be getting together beforehand. Want to make sure everybody has good plans and has a great holiday in mind for the next week. And I'll ask the city council for comments.
If I could just say one, I'm sorry.
I think I'm glad you're here. Congratulations. We're going to miss you. You got us where we are now.
You guys got me where I'm at now. Thank you.
Yeah, excellent. Thanks.
Just a segue back to the housing committee. The, ask everybody to look for volunteers and send them our way on the 19th. We're still trying to, we still need at least a handful of people, six or seven more people to, to work on this walk-around study, at least learn how to do it. And I'd like to ask the mayor if he considered doing pizza or something that evening for us to, to attract some more visitors to join us on this walk.
On the 19th?
On the 19th.
Whenever the walk is scheduled.
On the 19th, just something to finger foods or something to give the potato chips and sodas, something like that, just to.
I'm sure that we have that in the budget, so.
Okay, good.
Well, we will do that. Any other council comments?
I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
What preliminary work needs to be done for Centennial Plaza before work begins?
So.
And what would be the timeframe for that?
Yeah, we do have some preliminary work that, I know Chris is working on some electrical locations. And we'll need, we'll have, we have some contacts out with ComEd to determine dropping lines and how that's going to look.
Are we going to bury them?
The hope, the plan in the plan is to bury the lines to the buildings, but the general feed will still be on the poles. And so what we don't know yet, and Chris was telling me the other day, what we don't know what yet is whether that's going to make any changes to any of the poles, if there's going to be any issues from ComEd. I reached out to them once before. They had advised me that they were passing along to their group, but I haven't heard anything back, so I have to reach back out to them as well. And I don't know if you get your email, but I sent you the schematic design of the cover that PJV wanted you to take a look at and give them any feedback that you might have.
All right.
So if, if you don't have that, let me know and I'll make sure you get it, at least it digital or a bigger paper one because if it's on a regular sheet of paper, it's going to be hard to see.
And, and what about the substation?
So the substation, I just heard today that the environmental reviews have been sent from the field USDA work to their next level at the USDA locally. And so they just have to be reviewed locally would be champagne. And then hopefully that should be a couple of week max turnaround. My guess is nothing's going to happen before Christmas. And then we should get the go-ahead to go out for design or bids or whatever the next step is that they tell us we got to do.
I have a question about the, and I mean, I know it didn't happen, but it's in the notes here about the disc golf crawl.
Yeah.
And I should have looked back in my minute, is that something that we as a council approved to happen downtown?
So what they were doing was basically just going from place to place. And it was my understanding like, like as I said, are we throwing like discs?
Yeah.
It was a, like a 10-feet thing that they were just tossing a disc from a short distance.
Because that was, I had a resident ask me, they were like, why are you allowing the discs to be thrown around downtown where people are shopping?
Right.
And I was like.
It wasn't anything like that. It was a real small, it was disc golf in name, really.
Okay. Because I mean, obviously they're going to reschedule it, so maybe we have to put some parameters in.
More like a putting contest.
It was kind of like that, yes. Kind of like a little putting.
City administrator, anything else?
Just a couple of quick, first, my thanks this week is Greg in building and zoning. I've been keeping him busy and with the housing project, he's doing some research on downtown fire as well as we've been looking at different information regarding container-type houses and building codes and how they fit within building codes. Rick Rambo, he's been, since he's been back, he's been extremely busy. So he's getting a lot of inside work done right now. But again, thanks to him. And just to point out, if you made it all anywhere downtown at the caroling this Saturday, Nathan, it was a fantastic, we didn't have much in the way of scavenger hunting because it was raining and it was kind of crummy. But so they decided to go door to door, to business to business. And I mean, you couldn't have lit up anybody's heart anymore than that event took place. So super thanks to Nathan and his group for what they accomplished down there.
They were quite good too. They were, they were in our store, gave three songs and moved on, had the rain gear. So they were prepared for traveling.
Terrible job.
Can I have, ask one more?
Pardon me?
Could I ask one more question?
You got one more question for us?
Do we have a time limit?
Yeah.
Has a skating rink been busy?
Oh, so speaking of that, in your notes, you'll see last Saturday, not this one, but the one before, was their high 168 on Sunday there. So they have, they're keeping track of zip codes of people that come and those sheets are just full. So it has been quite busy. As a matter of fact, even when it was Saturday, when it was raining out, the line for Santa was long. So people were braving the weather. We've had nothing but positive feedback on its location.
Gary's not here to answer this question, but is it possible that that could be used in the warmer weather for roller skating?
Not for roller skate. You would want to limit it to just ice skating, but Misty already has her designs on like a Christmas in July, something. But you can pull it out and because it's modular, you can put, if we were to have a, an event, you don't have to make the giant rink. You could make a small strip for, if we, if we need to run anything on it, yeah, that would, but you do want to just kind of limit it to ice skating.
The rec center floor, on the bottom floor, is actually the right surface for roller skating. Looked into it a long time ago.
Is Santa, is Santa happy now?
Santa's happy. Santa's probably got a sore knee, I'm guessing today.
We do have need for executive session here too, so I can ask any public comments, but I see no public, so we're going to need a motion to adjourn to executive session. Motion by Frank, seconded by Scott. Roll call please.
Barr.
Yes.
Jovanini.
Yes.
Akoff.
Yes.
Callis.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Cowser.
Yes.
Bradshaw.
Yes.
Cranford.
Yes.
Howard.
Yes.
Willie.
Yes.
Thank you. We will adjourn to executive session. Give us about three minutes and we'll be ready.